Alex. I will call the planning board meeting to order is now 5:32 PM. Do you have any bills? No?
No bills.
No bills. How about some minutes? I don't have minutes here.
We should do that before we approve the minutes.
Or we can do it after.
Okay.
Well, if we do it now then the minutes are, well, it doesn't matter because I mean it's a correct now because it doesn't say that in the minutes, so.
I'll make a motion pursuant to last meeting that we approve the, that we approve the ANR for Ray McKenzie Taylor Street.
I'll second.
So are you in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Again pursuant to last meeting, I will make a motion to approve the Mountain Stream LLC ANR for Amherst and Bachelor Streets.
So you're second?
Second.
So are you in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion case.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 24th as presented.
I will second the motion with one correction. Just a spelling error, I believe. A and Rs.
MAC.
MAC.
Okay, on page three.
For Ray McKenzie, first McKenzie is spelled minus the A.
Which one is correct?
MAC.
MAC, okay.
So you're going to approve as amended?
Yes, yes, as amended.
All right. Are there any discussions, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Minutes have been approved. There's a letter here from PVPC. It's actually, it's just a CC to us, it's to William Porter III, Chair of Board Assessors. And it's a CC to the planning board.
Message number.
Yes.
Right, certificate of assessment.
Found the wrong.
Did you bring that in?
I did not.
Cracked over your shoes.
Very good.
Yeah. In the logs.
Have to sign. Is it for?
Correspondence, that's all.
I'll keep this so I can.
You just have that one to sign? Or it all to sign?
That's our record, so we'll all have to sign that. That's our record, right, so we'll all have to sign that.
Did we sign all of them the last time?
I was also trying to remember if we signed them or not.
At least when we were still here, we didn't.
You didn't sign one of them all here.
Because we were one short.
Where would they have ended up? Where would the other copies have ended up?
Unless Kathy had them. Kathy still has them. I don't think they're, um.
I didn't put them there.
On the left side in the back.
Something I thought they were in that drawer.
Um, that's the other thing Kathy was saying, that the, with all the moving around you're going to do downstairs, people going in down there. We need to take our stuff out of the hallway down there. And she said she could give us more file cabinets. Problem is, um, they won't be folded, plans won't be folded up like that, rolled up, they'll have to be folded.
Ed Chapdeline approached me on a job site last week and he's got some flat files for sale. He's put everything on, he's scanned everything.
Yep.
So I don't know if the board is interested in.
They have to go up here, what's going to happen is that Kathy and you go in there.
What will go in there?
That they're trying to hire.
A little tiny.
The cabinets will come out of there.
Oh, get them out of there.
What are they worried about, stuff downstairs or?
Because downstairs is going to be urgent when he does his veterans thing, I believe, right? And, um, who else did you say?
Who's got the marker?
Jeremy, who got the.
That drawer?
Building maintenance.
I don't know what the heck we're going to do with all that stuff.
Well, it's not like the conservation is going to be in the room, that's not ours.
There's, there's a fair amount of stuff that's ours.
And that hood lid?
Yes.
I thought it was, I thought it was, um, conservation. Because ours is the box outside of the vacuum.
We've got another box down over in that corner. There's two big boxes down there. One's conservation, yes. And then we've got all kinds of mylar's stacked laying flat on top of any horizontal surface that could be found.
Really?
Yes.
All right, we're going to proceed with A and Rs, at least the A and R.
Yeah.
So Kathy has the other ones, so.
I, I'm guessing if it's not.
If they're not here, they must go back to her.
So let's decide this one, get this one off.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the A and R for Grammy DG Series LLC.
Second.
Are there any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I'm sorry, I'm an aye for.
You're an aye?
In favor.
You're an aye for aye?
This is Ken, Ken Pomeo, say hi.
Hi, Ken. Jeremy, could you sign in please? Are you going to have a quorum? Great question.
Good question.
We'll know at six o'clock.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you. Um, did you get, is there a decision as well besides the decision?
Not yet. We.
Will everybody sign today?
Decision?
Yes.
Do you have a decision?
It just showed up.
We would have handled it tonight anyway until this timestamp.
Wait until we sign it tonight, is there anything?
I think we're planning on signing it tonight.
Right, because we all agree.
Yeah.
On it.
So you, is it possible you can go copy tomorrow or?
Well, it's got to get, it's got to go back to Kathy Leonard.
Who's not in tomorrow.
Who's not in tomorrow. Then, then it has to go to Kathy Kelly Regan Town Clerk.
I would say by the end of the week anyway.
And the 20 day, 20 day starts. It's not tonight.
You drop.
And the question I had is, at the last meeting, you were unsure on the filing, we're sitting down, we needed another check, assuming that.
Yes, you get a bill.
Thank you.
Well, welcome, Ken.
Glad to be here.
Well, glad to have you.
Do we want to sign the decision if we will, the decision?
We can do it, yeah.
This one's got 13 minutes.
So our last meeting, we were waiting, well, we weren't waiting, but waiting to hear from the Board of Health.
And Conservation.
Conservation, so.
But we made that a.
On the minutes, huh?
Well, I think the time expired by this meeting anyways, if I remember correctly.
Right, they should have.
It may have, I don't know.
They, I haven't seen anything.
But how would you respond? It'd be nice if they did with no objections and no issues, but they don't allow you to respond.
Now, in my decision there, I was opposed, I said it was a no because, so I would be signing it as a no.
And Rob would abstain.
Um, Ken, how many copies did you bring of that?
I brought 11. I brought eight, maybe.
Oh, okay, you want to just?
You want me to just send the.
Yeah.
This wasn't about the procedures.
No, no, this is the other stuff.
Is that the, okay, you only have one copy of the decision?
I do only have one copy of that.
Because we need two to sign.
So I guess in the future then, just make.
Make one for, make one for everybody and then two separate for signatures.
For the filing?
So if you will send that to me and my, do you have everybody's email?
I think based on your email, yes.
Based on, yeah, so you can send it to everybody, then everybody will have it electronically and I'll, Glenn, I'll print the copies and have, Kathy won't be there tomorrow.
Right.
You're talking about the petition?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe what, Bill did send it, I could be wrong, because I was copied on that email. Bill did send it.
He did send it?
He did send it.
Well, you just have two copies here that would be signed to make sure it's.
Okay, this is solar.
We're signing the same thing that was sent.
How does it work, although it doesn't say yes or no?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know how that works. It does have it in there.
It does say in there.
It does have it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so you're just verifying it, okay. I'll make a motion that we sign the decision for, uh, was it DG? Grammy DG Series LLC as written.
So you're second?
I'll second.
Are there any further discussion? All in favor?
Sign. Any opposed?
Everybody said a yes, so aye.
Well, I didn't, you guys want to sign it because I didn't read it yet, so.
Oh.
So pass it that way. But that's not until six o'clock. But we're still on to sign another one.
Yeah, hook up there, I'm sure.
Yeah, no, who wants that, and I don't know how to hook up none of those, so.
Well, do you have anything else to add to it?
Seven minutes.
Okay. So I'll hang onto this and bring another one in and, uh, just on the next side. Unless everybody wants to go.
Do they, they need to be originals or can't you have a copy of that and then timestamp it?
I think it's supposed to be two original copies.
It's either that or I don't know.
I think we just have, with the next few days, we just have Kathy print it. Each one of us go down there and sign it, that way they can, they can start the clock and all, wait another two weeks to sign it and then. We have to start the clock for them.
Yeah, well Kathy's not there tomorrow, but she will be there the next day, so.
It's Wednesday.
So if everybody stops by Wednesday.
Wednesday, Thursday, just to sign it, yeah.
Yeah, just to sign another one of these. Does that work?
I think just before the end of the week, that way she can get over to Kathy, um, Kelly. Get it there.
Anything else in the folder there? We have to close our regular meeting, right? Um, there was one just information in the beginning of those notices.
What's that?
The very first one, from the notices from the other towns.
There's one from the bunch, but there's one from town, Loveville. They're having a public hearing on July 11th, 2019 to discuss, uh, the solar project located Zero West Street and 62 Nashville Road. That's just where the.
Per se.
Yeah, where the, who's it?
Oh, Loveville.
It doesn't say, I think it is, is it? Text the board.
I'll make a motion to close our regular meeting for the purposes of opening the public hearing on our agenda. And the regular meeting will reconvene after the public hearing.
So you're second?
Second.
So are you further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The Grammy Board of Appeals along with the Grammy Planning Board will hold a joint public hearing on Monday, July 8th at 6:00 PM at One Library Lane, Oak Garden, Two Library, Tom Ford. Consider the petition of Raymond Voight-Gee seeking a special permit under section 6.2, the site plan approval under section 6.3 of the Grammy zoning bylaws and applicable, applicable section three, regulations 3.105. Accessory uses regarding a private garage or stables exceeding 1,200 feet in area will be located at 185 Kendall Street, Grammy Mount, known as Mount 15-A-16.2.
Um, you don't have a quorum for either?
Correct, we would need three out of four, we only have two.
Okay, so it's not.
What do you expect, I don't? I have an hour of background.
So you'll have to do your own after? So we don't need to call your meeting board or anything?
Correct, we are unable to actually, we don't have to call, so we will have to postpone the hearing part of it with the CBA. Correct. To have a hearing.
So we can go through the planning board part.
Correct, planning board can do their part and do. Correct, planning board can do their part and do approval of their portion. Then we would have to have a separate meeting.
And that's for conservation?
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay.
I had a question on the, on the uh, the form.
Okay.
You didn't fill out the purpose, it says for the purpose of.
Storage vehicles?
I'm sorry, what?
Personal storage.
Yeah, personal storage.
As well as, this is a special permit.
Yep, special permit needs to be checked.
Ask me a few questions.
Absolutely.
This can't be seen from the street, correct?
Maybe everything is too.
It's all a setback requirements.
What's the actual size of it?
Thirty?
What's the actual size? How big is it?
Uh, I think it's 25 maybe.
3,076 is what I calculated.
I think it's, it might be thirty, I think that's a long, I think it's, it might be thirty-six.
Thirty-six hundred square foot?
Well, we've got small portion is 26 by 26. And the larger portion is 40 by 60.
Twenty-four square. Figuring 1,200, hell yeah.
3,076 square.
3,076?
Square.
It's a nice looking building. Is there any running water flowing or anything there? Electricity?
Plus it's sitting on 14 acres. So it's not, it's on, it's on, you know, a 40,000 square foot building, right?
Right.
It's sitting on 14 acres.
Like I just said, you can see it from the airplane.
Yeah.
So no business being conducted in that building?
Is there any other structures on that site? Any other structures? Any other buildings on that site? Or is that located as far as the garage or building or roughly?
Basically straight across from, I thought it was showing on the prints there.
Sure. Just curious, we're a little safe to see anything outside there.
Yeah, houses. This is like right uh, control, okay? The houses are kind of right here and then you go. It's current around, kind of like that, probably a little more than I know, maybe.
How far from the, how far is it from there, do you think?
Probably 100 feet.
Okay.
It's pretty, it's 535 feet right here.
Okay. I was just curious.
Who's to your south?
Uh, they just logged on that, that's Shalaski, that's all those. This is all the logs. From Blas, it's part of this, it's all woods, um, getting flack on that. The closest house is over here, probably 450 feet.
About about between the houses now?
About 100 feet. Any questions to the board?
I'm also.
Any questions in the public?
They're pretty quiet.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve 3,000, was it 36 square foot?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. Square foot building for storage only at 185 Kendall Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do you need further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Guess our job's done.
So you already received a notification as to one of these.
We're going to reconvene, yeah.
And have a hearing for our part of it. Now, you guys are going to have to re-advertise unless.
We don't oppose it? But it's a joint one?
It would, it would have to be advertised. Not if it, not if you if you post if you posted the date. Continue it.
They can't open though, Jim.
They can't open, they're being too continue it.
That's fine, if you close yours and we can open up here and we'll post it. This delays him because there's a process.
Yeah.
Advertising, he's got to wait. This is a joint hearing, we can continue it. It would be at least two weeks because I'm on vacation next week and I don't know the availability of our board members either. Yeah, but my point is, you don't meet for another two or three weeks to make a decision when they have the meeting. Then it's another two or three weeks.
Yeah.
Well, we wouldn't have to meet to decide when they have the meeting, we can always have the time. Contact each of the members and decide on a joint group. I don't want to play that around here.
It's not going to be approved or you have to prove it also, um.
We have to prove it as well.
And it's just a forum, that's what you said?
Correct, forum. We have to have at least three of the four board members here.
I'm kind of liking Jim's idea, if we continue the, the public hearing. There wouldn't have to be any more advertising. You guys piggyback with us on, at our next meeting.
He's going to be on vacation.
I'll be on it. You have three.
So you should have the three members.
Yeah.
Jeremy, didn't you say you're, you're gone next week?
Correct.
You'll be back in two weeks.
In two weeks, correct.
Well, our meeting in two weeks.
We're focused on the same timeframe, but that would work if we could just jump on back. Otherwise, a lot better than advertising.
Right. However.
That's fully acceptable to me, yeah.
Yeah, we'd be meeting on the 22nd if I'm not mistaken.
Your board has four members?
Correct.
But we could always, to help him, continue to an earlier date if there are three board members to meet without him.
Just to do that?
But.
I think you'd need a definite continuance date.
Well, we would. We could set that now. But it would mean that we'd have to meet regardless, if you have enough people or not.
So you're a five board? We're currently four. Usually a five board. Let's just continue it because I, they may, this, this may require a super majority. So if there's four members, you may need, five members to the board, you may need four in favor. Because this is a special.
Yeah, Frank, you're in.
Because I knew we could have a meeting with three, but then we'd need four, he'd have to have all the decision, you know, making the materials for it anyway. And then be able to make a decision, it still has to be a four board vote, correct? For, just like we just did recently with another special permit, you have to have all four board members to vote.
So Jeremy, Kathy, you're both available the 22nd?
Yeah. So, you want to continue this to?
Yeah.
We've already voted an approval, but we can still continue it until the 22nd for a joint, for a joint until we behave.
The reason for continuing it is if we didn't continue, zoning board of appeals would have to re-advertise again, the registered letters sent out and everything else. And I'm not sure what, how, how long that process is before they could meet, at least.
At least. And if they don't, if they don't meet for two weeks, and it's four weeks.
Yeah.
And then it's 20, and if it's approved, then it's 20 days after that, the appeal process.
Yeah.
So, can drag on. So that would be great if they could, again, immediately as a joint hearing, continue it.
So should, should a motion be made to continue this public hearing until July 22nd at 6:00 PM again? Does that work?
Time with you?
Are you available, sir, for the 22nd? Just to make sure you're here.
We're asking everybody else except the applicant.
We need you here, so that's why we need to make sure you're available. If you're not here, then we're unable to do it as well, so.
Okay, so you've got a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So it's been continued until?
6:00 PM, Monday, July 22nd. Here.
I think you're a bit concerned.
Just want to make something started.
Making calls right after this. Make sure we have four people. At least someone must be here. We should probably revisit this 1200 square foot thing with these buildings. We're getting, we get them all the time, 1200 square feet is, is a small structure. Why would we deny something that's 2,000, I mean, homes are, are quite bigger than that.
Oh, certainly.
Just something for food for thought, because to go through this kind of a process for 1200 square feet. I get the parked two vehicles outside my garage. Doesn't, doesn't 3,000 square feet would be the threshold, but it seems like, you know, we should up that square footage to, to something more reasonable. And dragging applicants through this.
We'd be at 14 acres and you don't want to.
Although in the same respect, in the six years I've been on, I think we've only done this four or five times.
It's only been a handful of times we've done it.
Yeah.
That I can think of off the top of my head.
But I am not
That two come in.
Against revisiting this, because I, I don't think it makes sense either. It should be a larger square foot or foot foot.
Well, something to talk about.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
22nd. 6 o'clock, here.
Here.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bye Kathy.
Take care, goodnight.
Yeah.
Moving right along.
So now the meeting's reconvened?
Yes.
Perfect.
So I'm mixing our agenda. The solar moratorium.
Yeah, now, the, the other person I guess isn't going to be here.
Who's that?
The one that was here the last one.
Oh, Bogdanovich?
Yeah.
Well, he requested an appointment, but then he came in and as the minute said, I said it's not allowed near an area. But then he said he was going to the state to get all kinds of answers.
So evidently, he's not here tonight, so.
Nope. Unless he shows up sometime before we're done.
Yeah.
There's no time set with it.
Oh, should we, uh, before we go to the solar, should we go over the PV, thank you, PV PC contract?
Sure.
Get that done?
And I gave you copies of, um, last year and this year, and they're basically the same except for um, and the dollar mom is the same.
Yeah?
Yes.
The date is starting today instead of July 1st. Which is probably concealed somewhere.
So, I guess my only concern would be.
Which year, number six?
Our last contract ended June 30th, 2019.
Right.
If this contract starts today, was there anything that was done in between that we would be billed for?
Nope, Ken says no. Ken is shaking, he said no.
Okay, Ken.
Bill is not subjected.
Alright.
Assuming.
This is true.
And the only other difference is the last page as to what will be done, so it's a little different from last year. My shoes are included, a bushel of.
Okay.
Number two?
Yes.
Number two is the difference.
Number two is, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the first things is going to be to, uh.
The what?
To do the bylaws from our last meeting.
What about them?
To update our, our, um.
Solar? Or are you talking about the permitting guide? Oh, updating.
All the, all the changes that were, assuming they come back from the A G.'s office or the A G.'s office.
Yeah, and Bill had started that. Did he give that to you?
I'll follow him.
Okay.
As far as incorporating all the changes they've entered.
Right, we don't have word back from the Attorney General yet as far as I know. Has anybody seen anything?
I checked this morning.
No?
Usually it goes, goes from there. We send it to council. Town council. Especially if they tweak, they wanna tweak anything, town council has a little bit of it too.
If the Attorney General, is that what you're talking about?
No, then it goes to our town council.
You've lost me.
Pardon?
You've lost me, so.
So when it comes back from the A G.'s office.
Yeah.
We also, we also send it to the, uh, town council.
Oh. Just, he can't make any changes, though, can he?
He's gonna review, he'll review any of the changes that are recommended by.
Right, the A G.'s office will recommend any changes or.
Okay, or consider this coming.
Yes, yep.
Are we doing that?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Just the twenty twenty contract?
What's, uh, I'll just hang on one second, please.
Sure.
This is the amendment I was reading from our last contract, just because we went over the, the amount of agreement.
Right.
All right.
Motion to approve the Pioneer Valley fiscal year twenty twenty, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission fiscal year twenty twenty contract with the Granby Planning Board.
Is there a second?
Um. We have to say pending certification by.
No. Pending, at that point, it's Chris acting its time. Uh, pending certification as to the availability of funds by the Granby Town Accountant, Christopher Martin.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Is any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Somebody opposed? All right, Ken, we start talking.
Yeah, you're on the clock.
Um, I just want to introduce myself formally. Uh, Ken Cunningham with, uh, Senior Planner at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I've now been at the commission since the end of February. Prior to that, I was the Town Planner Conservation Agent for the Town of Southbridge. Uh, I was there about a year and a half, uh, working on a multitude of different things. Uh, marijuana bylaw, solar amendment. Um, as well as reviewing site plans and special permits such as the one that you just signed off on. And I believe that's the same applicant too that I worked with, uh, out, out there in Southbridge, cause I saw a name that was familiar to me. But, uh, yeah, so I, I look forward to, um, working with you all. Um, and I know that based on the last meeting, um, where Bill was working with you. Um, you left off on looking at some bylaws to address some of the solar, um, large scale solar development. And, um, I took a look at your minutes that, um, Will sent, um, from February, I believe, where it was talked about in, um, a little more, um. It looked like it, it was a meeting that a lot of different issues were discussed. And so I've pulled together, uh, three zoning bylaws that have been amended recently. Two of them are still undergoing A G. approval, and the Town of Berry, um, just, uh, had gotten A G. approval for, um, the specific one.
So are they the only ones? The other two have not yet?
These are the ones that, um, that have been amended recently, which I think possibly address some of the concerns you're looking at. Um, in regards to, um, maybe phasing, uh, forest cutting, um, if you're looking at contemplating limiting the amount of solar development. I'll be curious to see what the A G. thinks about, um, the Town of Lester's putting a absolute number on the amount of solar, um, development that they're trying to, uh, allow. They said twenty, um, of which the ones that have been approved would have been, um, you know, counted towards that number. So, um, following these, um, through its approvals with the Attorney General's office, it would be interesting to see. But understanding that, um, they were granted and their moratorium was approved, and this seems to be, you know, uh, parallel to that effort. So that was Lester's. Um, there's a staff report that's at the back of the actual, sorry, the staff report is in the front of the bylaw. They didn't have an updated bylaw, but, um, there is a fact sheet that was used for their town meeting to suggest some of the changes that they made. Uh, clarification of definitions, um, require vegetation remaining for the full required setback area. Limit land clearing to sixty percent of the total land area in a certain zoning district. Authorize the planning board to require phasing of tree clearing, uh, clarifying the abutters screening requirements and correcting some other errors, obviously. You know, if this is something that the board wants to explore, then we can, uh, you know, look at that and see specifically how to address it in your current bylaw. With that said, Palmer, I pulled Palmer, um, again, this hasn't yet been approved by the A G., but it has been adopted by town meeting. And, or town council, and, um, they had a significant section about land clearing and habitat impacts. So looking at, if you were to open up the Palmer section, um, page six. Uh, five point five, one, two, three, four. Um, I think that's pretty significant as far as, um, the possibility of, uh, you know, um, regulating the forest habitat and land clearing.
It's pretty detailed.
Yeah, and that would have to be demonstrable by the applicant, obviously. And it would be up to the planning board, which I believe is the site plan authority for solar projects, correct? And so the Town of Berry I chose, cause this was the most recent approved solar bylaw amendment. And, um, there were some citing standards, um, that were approved specific to, um.
Location citing preferences on?
Yeah, um, there were some changes in that, um, as well as, um, a limitation of megawatts of, uh, total capacity. New commercial, large scale ground mounted solar P V. facilities shall not exceed twenty-five megawatts D C. of total capacity for all newly permitted facilities. Beginning on the date of adoption of this revised bylaw. So, kind of looking at examples from other towns. And I, solar is something that P V. P C. is currently convening a roundtable. Our municipal services coordinator is, uh, convening a roundtable of various towns as they approach the solar bylaw. Solar in general, solar development in general.
And who's that? Who, who's doing that?
Eric Weiss. Um, is convening, uh, various towns and staff to, and board members, uh, that are interested in, in trying to regulate further.
Just trying to get all this, stealing into the salt.
Regulate further, um, solar development, um, understanding some of the things that have been happening, um, a lot more frequently as far as, uh, more solar permitting. That are, so more solar development approvals, um, and notwithstanding the obvious, you know, clear cutting of trees sometimes. Without maneuvering forward in the process of developing the solar. So people are cutting trees, or applicants are cutting trees and not necessarily, um. Developing so, or, you know, there, there's, there's a, there's a lag time. And I think, you know, that, that we're hearing is, is, is a concern to towns. Because they're unsure whether that solar development is gonna proceed. And so there's just like some timing issues, um, in regards to that.
So they're not, they're not necessarily stopping, but there's, you're basically saying the sequence of it, in other words, if you're clearing sixty-eight, if you can't clear all sixty-one until.
Right.
Until the first twenty are cleared and built up.
Correct. That there's some phasing involved, um, with, uh, you know, cutting your trees. So I, I use these as, um, you know, examples to begin with as far as ones that I've come across. Um, that I think may check off some of the, and will obviously fine tune for the town. Um, check off some of the, um, suggestions, especially about forest cutting and, um. Phasing.
So Eric is gonna not have his thing done for a while, I would guess?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I'm not sure where he is. I know that, um, you know, I've, I don't know if there's been an actual meeting schedule. Um, of these various towns that are looking at. I, I've received some documentation, um, in the form of approved zoning bylaws and ordinances from towns and cities. But as far as, I think there's, there's a more concerted effort to also involve the state, um, in regards to this. Because I think that they're finding a lot of issue also with towns complaining and, um, the solar developers that are not, you know, as responsible as they should be. Yeah, I, I, I couldn't give you a timeline per se.
I don't think we can wait for Eric.
No, no, and I wouldn't suggest that.
Didn't we run into the same problem with the marijuana bylaws? We're waiting for, we're hoping P V. P C. would.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, the funny thing is, they're still subsidizing this. The government's still subsidizing it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, and I think, you know, it, where you can regulate as much as you can, whether it's in the decision, um, or within the bylaw, I obviously would suggest the bylaw. Um, is what you need to, we need to explore, um, and come up with regulations that, um, reflect some of the changes that you want to, um, affect in regards to solar development. I think the low hanging fruit are the forests, yeah, phasing of the forest cutting, um, and that may be something that the board and maybe the town has, you know, um. Maybe in, in various community forums has, has suggested, I guess, you know, I think you have to understand that based on the zoning act. It is one, one or two like phrases about solar development, that you can outright prohibit them, but you can create regulations. And I don't know if the town is looking at, um, you know, specifically citing them, you know, picking parcels in which you want solar development to occur or.
Um, we're a green community too, so I think that part.
I, yeah, so I did look at green communities, um, and I talked to my colleague who was working on the Green Community Administration, Jill DeCoursey. And, um, my understanding is that she provided for me a fact sheet. So a municipality must provide zoning in designated locations for the as of right citing for one of the, so as of right without a special permit. Um, renewable or alternative energy generating facilities, renewable or alternative energy research and development facilities. Or renewable or alternative energy manufacturing facilities. So I think initially, and I think we'll have to go back in, when you got your designation, what, you know, checked off, the, um.
Okay, we already had that.
Yeah, and I think that was, yeah, and I think that was what, what she suggested, or what, what, based on her initial research of this. Cause that was my first question was, is Granby a green community, you know, and I know amending solar can, you know, create some off kilter if you're not being able to demonstrate those other things. So, you know, if Granby wants to explore, you know, regulating solar more so, I think they wouldn't necessarily lose the designation. Based on creating a little more, um, control over solar development.
Where people or whomever has the right to build large ground mounted solar is what we're talking about. I mean, people have the right for two hundred and fifty megawatts and under, it can go anywhere, right? But for the bigger ones, by staying in the green community, and one of the green community requirements, from what I understand, is you have to put a, create a zone for. Um, by right for large scale ground mounted solar.
Well, you know, I mean, if your zoning districts allow for, um, where's my Granby's bylaw?
Well, well, basically, we only allow it in residential. We don't allow it in business or industrial, because we wouldn't want to take the tax base away for land that can be developed.
Developed, used that way.
There was a better tax base for that. So, and we certainly wouldn't want it in the, uh, the village common.
But large, I mean, you're, you're saying, okay, to put large ground mounted, and some of these are very large, in residential areas.
That's the only other zone left.
Unless you make a.
Right now, that's the only zone that's left.
Unless you were to explore an overlay district.
But then again, if someone's residential and they own thirty-five acres of land.
Or we could do industrial one where the dump used to be. That, there's a lot of landfills that are turned into large scale ground mounted solar.
Well, to me, this is some good information, but my big thing is the input from the public. This is who we're doing it for. You know, we are the, just like I said before, we're the, the engine that's bringing it forward.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, the input from the, the residents of Granby are gonna really, um, give us an area what to focus on. And we'll look at what is, you know, that's our job to bring it to, you know, their desires to the town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So are you saying we're not gonna make any changes until we go through the public hearing?
We should be able to, we should present something at the hearing.
Well, I think we should present something, absolutely. But also get the input from them, uh, to what, you know, they want. Because when I've heard from both sides, there's concerns on both sides. As far as whether or not, what to do, or to be allowed.
Well, keep in mind, it's by special permit, so there's each, each solar, uh, project is subject to their, their, their specific environments.
Right. Right.
Based on our certain plan.
And we have the normal solar bylaws that every project has a bylaw.
Like you're like, you know, just reading a certain spot, it talks about that the solar farm can only be a certain percentage of the property. So if someone has a, a two acre lot, they're not putting completely two acres on that. So, to me, but personally, it's all because too.
There was one town that required a certain amount of acreage that allowed for a, so it, depending on the acreage, it allowed for a certain capacity of solar and a certain proportion based on that as far as how much of that property can be.
Bless you. Thank you.
And, you know, I can, I can share that with the board. But, yeah, I think, you know, these are all good points and, and I guess it, it's up to the board to see which ones you think A, can pass town meeting. And then B, that if you were to prioritize the things that you need in a solar bylaw amendment, especially with the moratorium and understanding that, you know, the, the state is ready to review a new zoning bylaw that, you know, that, you know, if, if it's to address forest cutting and phasing, or if it's to address size requirements or where they're located.
I guess, I guess that's where I am on some of those too, is that where I want input from the public, what their concerns are with it. You know, that way we, we're actually going in a direction that makes sense. You know, so if, you know, if we have people that are saying, oh yes, they, you know, clear cutting is not a concern of ours, then why are we pushing that way? Or if clear cutting is a concern of ours, then you know, I don't want us to.
It's, it's gonna vary based on, on the geographic area and town and who, who the butters are.
Well, right, but I think, you know, it does, but that's probably have the open meetings and people can come in and voice their, their thoughts and concerns.
Absolutely.
And that's what we, I mean, those are, those are residents, those are voters. That's what we're gonna, I think, take into consideration.
That, that's, absolutely, that needs to be taken into consideration. But the first round should be from, from the planning board and our consultant making suggestions. We're supposed to be the experts or.
Well, I can, like I said, and I think we can bring forward certain type of things that are, that are out there. First is to present our current bylaw. And then we could talk about some things that are, other towns are doing and with their concerns, I can award some things that they're looking at doing.
Here, here's, here's something that's come to mind recently. We've, we've, we've talked about having, having these bonded or so that, for decommissioning. But we've never talked about how long the permit's good for. The technology is changing so rapidly that these aren't, these are not a forever project. In twenty years, twenty-five years.
Could be obsolete.
They're obsolete. And they're already, whether they're obsolete or they've lived their, their, their full life expectancy. Twenty years is not a long time. So, so if we re, one of the things we should consider is permitting it for a set time. So that after twenty years, who knows what's changed between now and then? And maybe, maybe when they have to come back before us and we say, look at.
There's better things out there now.
There's better products out there that you can produce the same amount of kilowatts with half the square footage.
We've seen that already.
The acres.
So that wouldn't affect the the owner that they have with the landowner? Most of them are for, they follow what they.
And right now, it's, some of them are leases, some of them are outright land, land, acquiring land. That's, to me, that would be something that should be considered. If, if, if their town has the life expectancy for their particular product today is twenty-five years or twenty years, then, then that's when they should have to come back to either remodel or have us take another look at it and see what's, so it's not a forever.
You don't, you don't need us.
Huh? Well, no, we, yeah, here I go.
But can we decide how long a special permit is good for, or is that master under law has already decided?
Well, we, I, that's something that we would present if the town votes for it and agrees, we would present it to be the AG's office to. I mean, there's a lot of special permits that, that are permits that go out that need to be renewed annually.
Right.
So I don't know why, you know, after twenty years, if, if that's a reasonable amount of time, that they, they couldn't come back, they wouldn't have to come back and reapply. In other words, it's, it's not an open ended, they just, they go back there and place it, replace it with something else.
You can, you can always condition your decisions by requiring like an annual report. And, and require the developer to appear before the board and to provide any sort of, you know, update that has been in past practice written into the decision. Not just for solar, but for a lot of other, you know, types of high intensity type projects. But, and that's where, you know, you could write into your decision the appearance before the solar developer to come before the board every year. And I, I think.
That doesn't have to be a bylaw, that can just be a condition.
Correct.
So a condition that the developer comes before us to do what?
Update. I, I mean, I've seen it written where decisions say the developer shall every year come to the planning board to provide an update. You know, I think that at the very least, it would be, you would have the expectation that the developer will at least reach out and say, you know, that initially, this is what, you know, has happened. Do you want me to come in? And it's up to the board, you know, the board can say, no, you don't need to, or sure.
With that same thought too, I think there should be maybe even a yearly inspection from the town.
Well, I'm kinda stuck on what are they reporting that we would care about?
I don't know. I, maybe, maybe it would be capacity. You know, the, the, now that you have this new solar facility, what is the, how is, how is it affecting, you know, the people that are using it, using the services of it? As well as any sort of maintenance that happened over the year? Because under the operation and maintenance plan that's submitted with, with the solar application, you know, it states out what should be done, assuming there are issues that the town will bring up or annual reporting requirements to the other types of facilities or other types of entities that they would have to report certain things to.
To say, for instance, we had, we had fifty panels damaged. Those panels had to be replaced. We would never know that.
What do we care? They're not ours.
I'm not, I'm not getting that part.
I, I think is, is the main point he's making is that we can, you can put conditions that after twenty years, you need to come back to us and let us know what the capa, what the capacity, is there anything that we, we feel may be relevant?
But to go back to Bob's point, that they could have changed for a different type of panel. Maybe it's a tracking panel they put in. How are we supposed to know that? Three years down the road, technology changed a little bit and now they're using this panel instead of the previous panel which was approved.
Yeah, but a change like that cannot be made based on our standard order of conditions. Any, any significant changes like that, they have to come to us.
I think that's early in the bylaw.
Right. I mean, I, I've tried.
But different type of panels, I don't want to be trapped or whatever. I'm just trying to think of reasons why they could come back or they could report out or whatever. And the same thing, like I said, I think it's important that maybe we should look at having a, an inspection once a year to make, to ensure that they're doing what they said they were gonna do.
And maybe that's something we do in kind of a peer review way. The, one thing I am disappointed in, in, in some of the solar farms that we have approved is the inadequacy of the screening as we were promised.
But that's what I'm saying. So now it's a yearly inspection. Well, you said within two years, you expected these trees to be six feet high. Well, they're not even four feet high at this point. And some of them are dying or dead.
But there, there is a mechanism for that.
There is.
That's the code enforcement.
Right.
And where they haven't put them in and they should have put them in, that was code enforcement. They, they issued a, a permit to, to operate before they checked all the conditions that were, were posed upon them and we approved it.
So it's just the general health of the project and how long they expect it to still last up to twenty years total? Is that what you're saying?
So, so my, my point is the permit to do this shouldn't be indefinite. Maybe we look at it and say, twenty years, we want to know where you're at, if you're gonna get another five years out of it or what the, because we should have a heads up on the decommissioning. That, that we, if, if it's twenty years, that's what, if, if that particular applicant is, is telling us their particular panels are a twenty to twenty-five year panel and they've lived their life. At some point, it's, it, it peaks and then starts to come back at some.
They start to lose money on it.
They start, so we should know at that point when they plan on decommissioning, because decommissioning is just as important as site plan approval in the process.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And we have decommissioning.
Yeah, I, I see your point and I, I do agree there shouldn't be an open ended. Well, without a termination date or a review date might be the better way to put it. Somewhere in it.
And the same thing Ken made, uh, mentioned. I like that idea. I forgot what town it is or a couple of towns. If, if they're, if they're gonna clear sixty acres and it's been approved and they, and they own a hundred acres, they shouldn't be allowed to clear all sixty of those. We should, we should say ten acres or twenty acres at a time. Once you've got the solar panels up and operating, you know, phases, like he said.
Well, that's if they can do it that way. If you can, you know.
They probably can. It's just they're not gonna get their full money out of it till it's completely.
I, I would agree with that.
I don't know if they can separate and then reconnect and, I don't know.
It's kinda like developers, you know, if they're, they're, they're building, and they do this a lot. Oh, we're putting this huge development and we're gonna have a golf course. All right, put the golf course in first. So that you, so that all the homes you've, you've sold promising that, it's the same thing. Let's make let's make sure that they don't clear sixty acres or whatever it is until, until they phase it in.
Anything over an acre, you still need to sweep. Is that correct?
Um, I believe so. I think that's based on stormwater.
Right.
Yeah, it would be, yeah, the, the state requirement. I mean, that's the other component too, is your stormwater. Uh, you know, how would it mix the stormwater when you build these facilities? But they would be required to get those filings if they disturb over an acre, which most of these do. And have to go through the various permitting. So whether that be, so if, if the town had a stormwater bylaw, you know, whoever the stormwater authorities would have to review that. And there's probably some sort of documentation that they would need to provide. Same with conservation commission if they were to affect the welling. Or any of those other protected areas. But.
I think Dave DeRoche is our, our.
Stormwater management.
Yes.
He is.
There are some little tweaks that need to be done for current bylaws and that's, if you go back to that document that's from two thousand fourteen that's appears, there's model zoning things, which is I'm guessing what was started with back then. Some of the numbers, our, our bylaws are five point whatever. Their examples say three point something. There are some three point somethings in here that, that need to be five point somethings.
Yeah, like the first five point nine, um, under general sighting standards, just some numbering.
Yep.
Clarification of that formatting.
And general sighting, um, three C is talking about stated within section three table of density. I think that needs to be clarified a little more, maybe even in our, our table. Our density table, which just says dwellings or something other than houses. So.
What are you looking at?
Looking at our bylaws.
First is bylaws.
Did you pass it? Did I get that?
No, she didn't pass it.
No, I sent it to you.
It was emailed.
I didn't print it out. Yes, I, yes, she did send it. I can see that number.
It's table three point two. Step back within section three. It's not section two. But it says structures other than dwellings. This should not be here. Just like a continuation. So, um.
So again, we continue, or you continue to find?
We all continue to find. Did you wanna look at that just for ha-ha's? You know what I'm talking about? Now, um, Ken, when, um.
So what are you, you're saying it shouldn't be here, the structure other than dwellings?
No, I'm saying that darkened line should be, it's like it was a page break before and so it belongs above or not at all on there. You see, it starts a section. You follow that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
It, it just kinda breaks it up. It makes it look really confusing. That's the way they are right now until the attorney general says, okay, fine.
I'm kinda short on time tonight, but, so I, I think what, what Ken presented is excellent. You know, there's some things there, but I'd like to go through the state recommendation, just recommendations or whatever it was and see.
Well, you've got most of it right here.
Why is that different?
Model is a very zoning.
That's December two thousand fourteen? This is, this is what you sent us.
Yeah. It's the actual wording.
And with this one.
Yeah, you got that one, that one.
Can you send me that, please?
Yeah.
Would you be so kind?
This has the actual wording that the state suggested. I, I thought I did it, but Bob doesn't have one.
No, I didn't, I didn't.
I will reset.
I do remember, but you're saying it's something different.
I got this one, which was March two thousand fourteen.
An updated one.
Little, little has one, December two thousand fourteen. Unless it was on a different email than all this other stuff came in on.
It should have been on the same one.
Okay, but it's not about that attachment.
Somewhat follows, for the most part, our bylaws follow this. There are pieces that were left out in our bylaws. That might be good to put in, like some of the definitions and that.
Uh, following up to what Jim was just saying a couple of minutes ago, I would like. I would like to take some time to go through the town of Berry, Lester and Palmer, I think we have here.
Hi.
Let's see what they have. Uh, also Glenn, you want that back?
Oh, I don't think I have an issue with that.
I don't think I need it. Also Glenn, did I hear on the, at the last left boards meeting that supposedly the energy commission is gonna be putting together a list of recommendations?
Yes, that's what Jay, Jay had said.
So we should see what they have to say, when is that hitting, Glenn?
I, I mentioned to him that he, when they meet, they can send it to the planning board.
And they're not meeting for a couple of weeks?
Okay. Another thing that I wanna draw attention to is, this was on, the solar moratorium was on our agenda, has been on our agenda for two weeks. Notice the public participation.
Well, that's what I said, we'll, and we'll see when we have our, our actual public input meetings, uh, to see.
Well, I wonder if we should have one sooner rather than later.
Or do you wanna? We should have something to present first.
That was gonna be my next question. Do we just go in and, and grab that all information we can off the public, or should we have something ahead of time?
We should have something to present.
At least gray, gray at best.
But I don't want, see, I guess where I am with that is I don't wanna put thoughts in people's heads. I want people to talk about what their, their concerns are, if any, and stuff like that. Yes, I'd like to present our current bylaw. Yes, I'd like to present some of these that are from our surrounding towns. This is what our bylaw says, this is what, uh, the town of, uh, Bear, Bear, Bear is doing. It's a reference to their, you know, to, to help with their bylaw to help with clear cutting. They are doing this, is that something people wanna do in Grandby?
I, I don't know that you can necessarily do that, because as one of you two gentlemen said earlier, this is what we're elected for, we're supposed to be the quote unquote authorities on this kinda stuff.
But.
And public input is good and is required, so.
But as I said, I, I believe us, I agree with you, but that's important that we're getting the input from the public. We are, we are the engine that's bringing this to the town meeting.
Right, but we have to lead, not lead, but.
We have to post, we have to post a hearing with criteria for the, for the meeting. And then, and then it's open for discussion on anything the public would like to, like us to address or they'd like to address.
Well, that, but again, again, that's why I'm presenting our current bylaws, some of the examples that other towns are doing and the reason why they're doing it. Versus compared to our, our, our bylaws, if we're looking to change something in our bylaw, and one thing we heard was about clear cutting. Well, this is what some other towns are doing in reference to it. Like I said, I want, I read one part where, you know, it's an actual percentage of the area that you could use to have a solar farm. So if you have three acres, you're only allowed to use sixty percent of that or something for a solar farm. You know, so I guess things like that, cause they give the input to the people, but also extract the input from the people to us, for us.
So you're just saying, when the public hearing comes on, we say, we can, here's our current solar bylaws. We're not changing anything right now, here's some ideas, let us know what you think.
Well, we're not changing anything right now, we're not, that's, that's what this is all about, changing it, if, if, if that's what the people want.
I think it's open to, to too much interpretation. In all honesty, I, I think we need to have some definition in which way the planning board is going. To present to the public.
But it's not about the planning board. The planning board's not here to make that decision. We're, we're, we're the, the policymaker and the engine to bring that.
But the discussion will happen from the public input side on what we are potentially suggesting. And like I say, this is all gray, this is not black and white.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
But we have to have something other than just giving them the existing bylaws.
The way it's, the way it's typically worked in the past for other, for other, um, bylaw changes or amendments is we would go through what other communities have done. We've been asked by the, by the solar moratorium to go through the recommendations or, or some of the suggested, suggestions that the state is, is handing down. We go through that and then we, we formulate our, our recommendations for the hearing.
For changes.
For changes. Then we, we, we get feedback from, from the public, we tweak it if we deem, if we deem necessary. And then it goes, then it gets broken up into articles, several articles, so if one thing wasn't, if one article, if, if one thing within the large article.
It keeps on going, you're not gonna lose everything.
You're not gonna lose anything. And that's, that's how, it's always worked in the past. And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's you, is that?
That's basically what I'm saying, though.
Yeah, we have to present something first, we have to present recommendations.
Well, we are, we're presenting, I think we're presenting what other towns are doing, that maybe that's something we're suggesting.
Not in a public hearing setting. So, cause a public hearing is meant to hear your bylaw amendment. So when you're ready to go through a process, you know, as per the state, um, zoning act, you're meant to receive testimony from the public and during that process, whether or not you choose to have it over one meeting or four or, you know, however long within the confines of the state act. Your end product is basically the bylaw with a recommendation, assuming most likely to approve it because it's your bylaw. But I think I know where you're coming from, however, I've never seen it where the planning board has come up with recommend, I mean, I guess if, if the planning board wanted to address certain aspects and recommended approvals for all of them, you know, it wouldn't be as confusing. I've seen where the planning board presents a recommendation and then other entities have also provided recommendations and the planning board has to hear that in a public hearing setting. If there was another board or, you know, interested group of people, you know, they would bring that. I, maybe you can format, you know, your, your hearings to address certain aspects of it, I, I think that probably can be explored. You know, you just have to make sure you're within the timeframe.
Well, that's, that's the other thing, you know, you can't drag this out.
Right, especially if your moratorium is to the end of January.
Uh, yeah, our total moratorium ends in June, but our bylaw changes has to be to the select board by August five, so.
At this point in time, I don't see that happening.
Then we are, the first public hearing notice is gonna be sent out August nineteenth. That gives the select board a couple of weeks to suggest any changes that they may have, that's part of the procedure.
We would have to have these changes made by the, by the meeting on the twenty second.
Or make them finalize them then and then, you know, pin it and put them all together for the select board's meeting, which would be the eighth, right? August, no, your first meeting is August five.
They, they have to approve the, the, um, agenda for the hearing.
Right.
And that's why we have to have a, an agenda. Now, the other thing is, don't think we have to try and get our arms around every possible change we could make. Let's just focus on, on some, the top four or five or whatever amendments. Rather than, we can always come back again with or without an amendment, or with, with or without a moratorium to tweak it some more. Like I've always said, it's a living document, we just need to keep bringing back, bringing it back to the town for a town vote. So let's just focus on, I mean, the recommendation, some of the suggested recommendations that the state has made and pick a couple out of there that make sense for, for Grandby, that, that are applicable. And some of the suggestions that Ken brought that may or may not be applicable to Grandby. And just go with those to start with.
I think that's the only way we're gonna have something.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to make twen, have twenty articles.
Yeah.
No.
But I don't think we can wait till the next meeting to do this either. I think we should have a meeting in between. I just don't like these tight deadlines, I'd rather have everything done with room to breathe.
Do we, do we, I, I guess, obviously we're all individuals on this board. Do we go through the bylaws or, uh, that Ken gave us and we pick each one of us, kinda look at what we think is important? Cause that way we can bring it to the table and say, well, this is what I think's important to be there, or why.
That's.
The state regulations are state regulations, we can just pick them as, as such.
Regulations, guidelines.
Guidelines, sorry, guidelines.
Okay, so.
But I think we have to start with, with that first.
Wait, that can be at our next meeting though too.
But I think we have to look at, since we have this additional documentation, we can look at it all and have it all at least somewhat absorbed for a next meeting before the August twenty second meeting.
Yes.
July twenty.
Thank you, July twenty second meeting.
So basically, I don't wanna, I don't wanna just plagiarize what they've, other towns have done.
Yeah.
I wanna look at the state, what the state handed down. And, and then.
Which is what you should already have.
Correct.
Okay.
I will say with the, sorry, um, with the state regulations too, or the state model bylaw, that's also now five years old. So, um, you know, I think that has probably evolved more so and I would, um, suggest looking at, you know, these amendments more clearly based on, not, I, I'm not saying force feeding these, but, these, these bylaws that I've identified as ones that have passed, at least passed muster at the town level, but one of them actually passed muster at, for the AG's office. But reflective of many of the things that I think have, that have been identified as concerns for the town. To take a look at that, I think the state regulations are there, or the state model bylaws are there to, it, it, you know, I think I can see it both ways, because the state doesn't want you, uh, want towns to, um, create, how do I wanna say this? The, the state is ensuring that those bylaws are specific to, I think the regulations you provided were provided through green communities. So there are specific things within a green communities program that will address solar. But I don't think, and in that green communities, it's addressing them by right. And, you know, there are probably things that you may want to explore where, you know, you may want to look at specific zoning districts or, um, creating requirements for the size, um, of these solar arrays in farms. Forest cutting, um, you know, distance setbacks, uh, just those types of things. I don't think, I think that they do provide a good guideline as far as some of the generic, um, things that should be in your bylaw. I think as Lil has said, that's probably the basis of your zoning bylaw that you've created and is based on that two thousand fourteen.
And as far as I know, the state hasn't come up with anything else on the tree that's saying, we've changed our mind on this.
When did our bylaws go into effect for solar?
Anything from the state.
I wrote it two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, I wrote it on the same time.
I didn't do that, I didn't hear.
Two, March ten, two thousand.
I'm just wondering where our bylaws went to effect.
Unless you, I mean, this is an amendment. But this was on, this is the one that you shared.
Yeah.
Um, if this is the current bylaw, I don't know if there was an amendment prior to this, or there was an original.
Is the date on that, fourteen?
Two thousand fourteen, March ten.
Or was it two thousand eleven that you might have?
I think so.
Done in the actual creating.
I was not on the board when.
I, I was on the board, I thought Jim was only on the board at the time.
Yeah. And Mary McDowell was on the, on the, uh, select board at the time. So that has to be.
At least.
So that's a, that's an amendment that we probably could have designed or something afterwards that we touched on.
Yeah, and it may have reflected, you know, whatever was out by the state. Um, cause there obviously probably was a reason why you wanted to amend the bylaw. Um, whether or not it was for communities designation or something.
I think it was, it must've been right around the Green Community Act.
That's when, that's when we originally amended it, yes.
We have to do, yeah. Didn't Larry Smith help with that? I'm pretty sure you can see, so you might have something in the dredges back there. That you can
Take a look.
Figure out when it actually started. But nothing from the state other than what they suggested here, so the only, only thing we would have to go on would be the ones that can.
My point is if there's something that we think we should do that, that, that has been handed down from the state, so yeah, that, that may be clear cutting, let's say, we, we don't wanna do more than eighty percent or sixty percent or whatever it is. Then we can go back and refer to what has already been approved by other towns that got approved by the AG's office.
Well, you can only look at one thing that's been approved by the AG office at this point in time.
Right. Which one, was that Bear?
Was it Bear?
Yeah.
Bear.
Yeah, Bear.
So when do we, when will we wanna meet next?
Um, the energy committee is meeting on eighteen. So.
So we could have input from them.
Well, you know what, we don't, we're not waiting on, on the energy committee, I don't think that's.
No, but I'm saying.
They can, they can, they can come to us during the hearing and present to us if they'd like.
I mean, I am not available this Friday evening.
Yeah, Fridays aren't good for.
Yeah.
Fridays aren't good for anybody, right?
No. I'm looking at sometime next week, either Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
I can't do Thursday.
So sometime next week, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Um, it depends on the time, my, my niece is coming up from Georgia and she's leaving on a five twenty PM flight on Wednesday. So I have to take her down to Bradley.
So how about Tuesday the sixteenth?
I'm good with that.
What time?
Do you wanna do the five thirty?
Sure. Ken, does that work for you?
That, that's fine, yeah, I don't, I was gonna be concerned if you said Monday, cause I have an evening meeting Monday.
We may not be able to meet up here because conservation meets on Tuesdays. But is that the same, well, maybe not then, I'll check.
No, they should be meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, well.
Yep. So it should be okay.
Cause we meet the same week, it's different days. Okay.
Okay.
So it's the sixteenth at five thirty?
Yes.
Here. Now in the meantime.
I'm sorry, you want me to make them up?
What? You know what, what we should probably do is get that, that other decision letter and just do it then.
Good deal.
Yeah.
I'll just bring it with me then.
Yeah. Right, and it's.
Okay, to continue discussion on the solar bylaws.
And the contract.
Um, so our homework is to read all of the documents that Ken.
I'll also share them. I don't think that they're word, I was gonna say if they were word. I was gonna say if they were word, you know, if you, it was easier for you to just kind of make notes, um, throughout the bylaw.
What are you trying to do?
No, like, you know, if it was a Word document, you could do, you know, someone could just review it on the computer if you wanted to type notes. But I don't think any of them are Word. Those are all PDFs. But I, I'll share it nonetheless.
PDFs of what?
Of these documents.
Oh, you can, I can convert the PDFs back into a Word document. You can send that to me.
Okay.
And we'll send everybody the Word document. And if you wanna do it electronically, of course you wanna do that electronically.
Yes, of course.
You could see.
The grand desire in my face, can't you? Nothing worse than sitting at the...
Okay. So I will send Word documents of the three towns Ken gave us. We will all review each document for potential inclusion in our current solar bylaws. Does that work?
Don't forget the state. Review the state recommendations, or...
That were already sent.
Yeah, but if you could send me that green, no, I got the green, you got the blue.
There I am, continuing. This one is model as of right, zoning bylaw.
Yeah, that's the one I need.
Can you resend that?
I will resend.
With the same package?
Yeah. I'll resend all of the documents, and that may have to be in two emails, so I don't call everybody's email.
Okay. Are we all set?
I am.
Well, make a motion to adjourn.
So a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?